Call the meeting to order. This is the June 5th, 2025, Meeting in Central City Planning Commission. We are joined by Mr. Thomas Porter, Mr. Tefts, Mr. Miller, Ms. Burzak, Ms. Rice, Ms. Jerick. I'm Patsy Herzl. First item on the agenda is the approval of the May 1st, 2025 meeting minutes. They're provided to you in draft form in your packets. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes, Ms. Burzak?
Page four. There's a paragraph down. Ms. Burzak stated the property being developed in her planned unit development should meet the parking standards in table 18-1. And then I had said unless requesting a variance. And I would like that added because clearly in a PUD can request a variance and change the parking numbers.
All right, anybody have any objection to that addition at the end of that sentence? Table 18-1, unless requesting a variance, would that meet your objection? Does that, Ms. Burzak, would that meet your objection? Yeah, what is the, what is the question? I'm sorry, Kristen.
Yes, thank you.
All right, any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing all those in favor of adopting the minutes is corrected here, do they signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Same sign, minutes are adopted as modified and corrected here today. Next item on the agenda, new business, we have a public hearing for the property located at 230 Upton Drive, Harbor Shores Community Redevelopment LLC. Here on behalf of the owner of the property, Whirlpool Corporation, a map amendment is requested from industrial to heavy industrial to water recreational. We'll open, yes?
I need your input and leave the room.
You are involved in some form or fashion with this project or one of Harbor Shores or whatever?
Yes, with this project specifically.
As a result of your employment with Havenmark?
With Havenmark, yes.
All right, I'm pretty sure counsel signed, all on board with that, so duly note while you leave the room. Thank you, Ms. Burzak, we'll have you back shortly. We will open the public hearing and at the podium, we have someone to speak to this. If you tell us who you are, what you're asking, and be advised, the application was provided to us about a week in advance, so we have had a chance to look at it. So tell us what you're looking for today.
Yeah, good afternoon, my name is Kerry Wright with Harbor Shores Community Redevelopment LLC, filling in for Chris Cook, who had a prior engagement. As you saw in your packet, we have a parcel of land that is a pie-shaped parcel of land. Harbor Shores is under contract to purchase that property from Whirlpool Corporation. It will become likely part of our PUD that we refer to as parcel two. So parcel two is the larger piece of property on the water. Witwam Drive divides parcel two and parcel one. Witwam Drive dead ends into the subject parcel that we're asking to be rezoned. This property is currently zoned industrial, we're asking it to change to waterfront recreational, consistent with the other parcels that we own. It's consistent with your 2016 master plan, which I think is an important piece to point out. I think it's pretty straightforward, I don't know if you have any additional questions for me?
All right, Mr. Wright, thank you. Do we have questions for the applicant? Well, we have him on the microphone at the podium, anyone?
I do.
Mr. Eric, if you would, please.
Kerry, the adjacent property, those industrial pieces or buildings, what is just adjacent to that parcel? What's the usage there?
Yeah, if you look in your packet, I think there's some pictures. 4.2. C, there's some photos looking west, looking southwest, looking northwest. And then if you look 4.2. A, you'll see an aerial that shows a kind of a better idea of what's there.
Yeah, I see that, what, do you know what it is? What is that, what are they doing in that building?
No idea.
Really?
I happen to know it's some sort of building material supply, something like that.
We're talking about Anderson Building? You're talking, it's Anderson Building Supplies.
All right, so it's still in operation?
To the south, you mean? Correct, yes, that is Anderson Building Supplies, yeah.
Long, long time local business, they've been there forever. That parcel, that's totally uninvolved, that has nothing to do with your.
Correct. I understand, but it's adjacent to the parking.
Yes, okay.
I have a question.
Mr. Plitt.
Speak to what you're probably going to do with them, you're going to put, is the idea to put the condos there, put that townhouses there? What is it?
Great question.
How does it fit with, with this adjacent property?
Yeah, I believe in the application that Chris filled out, he had mentioned homes or apartments. I would add a third leg on that stool and mention hospitality. As we look at the larger parcel and the parcel to the north, and then this being the third parcel, I think marrying together the residential, the rental component being apartments and the hospitality, all three of those parcels have to be looked at almost as one parcel. So I'm not evading your question, but I think it's a little more complicated than just what's going on that one parcel.
No, obviously because it's divided by a road, it's divided by two roads, so they're going to have to be three separate settlements.
Likely.
By hospitality, you're talking, are you talking, I'll use the word commercial, restaurant type? Commercial enterprise?
Yeah, restaurant hotel, yeah. Yep, we see this whole, all three of these parcels consistent with what we've done over at the Harbor Village neighborhood, just to.
Other questions for our applicant?
So I.
Mr. Miller.
Just so I'm clear, parcels one and two, those are the lots both north and south of Witwam Drive.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I've got one more.
Mr. Eric.
Timing on this, Kerry, what's terms of development?
Yeah, good question, we're in the permitting phase right now for the marina. Assuming, you know, it's a 79-slip marina that will build on what is parcel two. Assuming the permitting stays on course, we would hope to start that marina yet this year, along with infrastructure for the residential development on parcel two. I think Kristen can likely share with you, the part, the subject parcel that we're here talking about today will likely not be a part of our initial ask, or our phase one, if you will. So that, that will come later. But parcel two, we'll start to develop that this year yet.
Yes, great.
I mean, the marina also would be part of the PUD request, that it's not part of that.
Yeah.
Some private property.
Who has the jurisdiction over the marina? Right now?
They will. It's on their private, there's a specific tax number for that land in the water. That was originally, Whirlpool had a little marina there. So they have to go to Eagle and, or Army, I don't know.
Yes, that's who we're working with right now.
All right, thank you. Anything else for our applicant? It's a moment, we'll, if we have anything, we'll bring you back. Discussion, comments, thoughts from planning officials, Mr. Miller?
A question that I, I guess I just thought of in first, for maybe Kristen. If this was zoned water recreation district, would it, would an industrial use still be allowed if?
If it complies with the requirements of, there are some industrial, it's associated with boats, yes, it could be. But they, it's part of their PUD when they come in and develop, but they're going to put on their uses, so.
Well, I'm, so I'm just looking overall in just the, if it got rezoned to water recreation district, let's say, current plans maybe don't work through and future changes come along, and let's say the, the Anderson Building and the, the commercial shipping dock there wants to expand, would that be able to expand into that space?
What they want to do is probably require a rezoning or a PUD with those specific uses requested.
Okay, thank you.
If this is given up as industrial, where does that leave us on the map of available industrial parcels left in the city?
The two parcels next to it, to the south, or zone I two, those would be the remaining I two parcels. There's a couple, I have one parcel sign on island, and then off of Hawthorne. There's, there's some larger properties there, most of them ours have a.
And from the city's perspective, reducing the available industrial by this amount, does that jeopardize overall from the city's perspective? Reducing it by that much, it limits, again, we're limiting the amount of industrial that would be available for future development of some kind.
That's correct, but I think if you go back to the 2016 master plan, while I was here throughout the whole process, I was concerned about the industrial uses in the future and what would be there. Or water recreation.
No, I'm just at the balancing out in terms of where we're at, flash forward nine years, where we're at and what you're seeing, whether or not you feel that unduly restricts what's available, or if the city is comfortable giving, basically giving that up.
I think it's fine, it's been used as a parking lot, so if it's developed, the residential, the tax base will go off.
Other questions, comments from planning officials?
Yeah, I do like to think about your, your comment regarding the, the amount of industrial still available. Are the, are the two gravel shipping locations in the, in the river further upstream, are those, either of those in the city?
The one is at the, at like the head of the island, that's in the city. The one that's more to the north, that's in the city of that.
And those are zoned industrial, or?
Ours is, I don't know.
Our, ours is, that's, that's an industrial zoned. You know, especially in particular, its proximity to the river, you know, heavy industrial can, can be very useful in those areas, depending on, on the use.
Those two parcels are different because they have dock space right on the water, whereas they're getting deliveries from the lake, whereas this piece of property is only in line, not getting any deliveries from the lake.
There's some deliveries there. There was a pretty large industrial.
Little bars or.
Yeah, so there are some, it's not consistently used for that, for sometimes there's a special project that will use that point to offload.
That I would.
Yeah.
The boats I've seen come in are.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Plitt.
Behind this parcel, there's, is that a railroad track, an abandoned railroad track?
No.
No, that's active.
Okay, and that's active, and that's used obviously in relation with this going bridge, silos, all that.
Yep.
And that will continue to be.
Yes. And track uses those tracks. And there's some break that uses it, and that's where the, the bridge, the bridge that rotates to the river.
It's just opening.
Right.
The photo shows it open, so it didn't. Yeah, I know, I know. That's not going anywhere.
Technical question, counsel? Feel I should compel, I don't think it's an issue or a problem, but I was in reviewing the application on packet page 13 at the top. I note that the property owner, which is indeed at this moment in time, Whirlpool Corporation, apparently in negotiations to acquire, but the Whirlpool contact person is of course a former member of this body. And I suppose we probably ought to at least note that she's not been a member for some period of time, a couple of years, and I don't think that's a problem, but I also don't want that to come back later, because Ms. Whipper was indeed not only a member of this body, but she was vice chair for a period of time. So I don't think we need to do anything other than note it, I don't think it gives any reason why we can't go forward today, but I don't want it to be in there and then some, come back later that, you know, a former member of this body was involved somehow in this. Is that sufficient for your purposes, counsel, for the record? Anything beyond that we need? Yeah, and, and obviously Harbor Shores is here with the, I assume, sir, with the express authority of Whirlpool to be here and make this presentation, though they are the owner, so that's, I don't think that no one's raising that as a, as a question, but we're just covering all our bases, so.
Somebody else, Kristen just turned out to be on the very last page.
Yeah, I saw that as well, it was actually was a little bit confusing, but, okay, I just. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I, I would think so, so I just, like I said, just cover, covering all the bases, so moving on. Other comments, discussion, if not, ladies and gentlemen, what is your pleasure this afternoon? Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion.
Mr. Miller.
I will move to recommend approval of the proposed zoning map amendment request by Harbor Shores Community Redevelopment LLC on behalf of the property owner, Whirlpool Corporation, for the property known as 230 Upton Drive, from the I two heavy industrial district to the W water recreation district, based on the information included in the June 5th, 2025 Planning Commission, as the request meets the required standards under section 22.3 of the zoning ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Miller, I have a motion, ladies and gentlemen, do I have support for his motion? Mr. Eric got me just by an eyelash, Mr. Eric supports the motion, is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing on the clerk may call the rule.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Horrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tefts?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Slope?
Yes.
Ms. Chair Herzl?
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to.
All right, and this will go to the city commission?
On the fourth Monday of June 23rd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's a PUD plan for parcel two?
It's out there, it's not ready for you yet.
Could you, could you ask Ms. Burzak, can you join us? Thank you, all right, thank you, thank you, sir, very much. Next item on the agenda, discussion, oh, site plan amendment process. The city, or staff, I guess I should say, wants us to, or wants some input from us and thoughts on, welcome back, Ms. Burzak, regarding possible, possible changes to our current ordinances regarding major and minor site plan changes, and I know we're going to reduce it down here, maybe direct into the bone here. How much do we wish to leave discretion of staff, and how much do we want to have eyes on? That's kind of cutting it to the bone, but, but it's pretty much it. I guess the one thing that I, I would, what I wanted to know as I was going through this, because I'm, I'm not, I mean, I'm a big fan of discretion, but I also understand that part of the ordinance provisions, particularly with regard to height and footprint, height in particular, was kept in there purposely to require that to come back, so that this body would have eyes on that. That doesn't mean minds can't change, but just little history for those of you who weren't here at the time. I guess I, you reference, we've got all these, you know, pictures of these places, and I get all of that. Can you give me an example of one where, where either staff, staff is taking the position now that it's major under our current ordinance, but you think that should have been minor, that staff could have done administratively without coming back? Can you give us a, it helps me to have a, for instance?
So the ordinance is very clear, it's no expansion in the footprint of the.
Correct.
So we can't do anything, but once in a while we get people come in, I need to construct the vestibule area, and that would require a, a public hearing before the.
Okay, so is that a real thing that happened? Give me, that's what I'm looking for, an example of.
The board, the hospital has one where, you know, if you look at the aerial from the hospital, there's, it's not a square building, there's a lot of additions on there.
Yeah. We know, we, we can, we can all attest that the hospital is not a square building. Yeah.
You know, there's one side where, you know, they had referenced, oh, it'd be nice to connect. It's like a triangular piece where they add it on, and when they originally did the design, all this, they just add it on, and there's a triangular cutouts of the two walls, and they think they could set it as additional space. Or in the courtyard areas that aren't visible to the street, you know, we use the courtyard areas and build out in those.
Yes, you know, now that's where I start getting into the, having some concern, because courtyard building areas, that's an example, I'm not saying that's not legitimate request, then I remember the hours and hours of public hearings where we work with applicants and protect green space, and, okay, I'm going to anticipate Ms. Burzak chiming in here before she even gets a chance to, because she's going to want to make sure that the landscaping, I'm just saying, those are the kinds of things that we do spend, as you know, a lot of time on. So I guess it's, it's more, is, does staff have some concrete recommendations on what staff is looking for as to criteria to help you decide if something's major or minor? That, that might allow you to do some of this, but not abdicate all of our responsibility completely.
I think one, keeping in within the setbacks or within the building lines, so if you're connecting a space, that probably okay. You're not doing a big addition off the north end of the building. Probably having, we touched on a little about, should there be a maximum increase in size? And you can see the difference between the hospital book and the appraisal, or the storage units out there on the island, they're all very different. So a 5% increase on one could be quite substantial versus 5% on another one, so maybe.
Help us out, how, how often does this issue actually come up?
I think it's coming up as the hospital's doing more and more work revamping their space. I think they're probably the biggest one that has.
Because then that always, I wondered about that, that would make sense to me, because then that always triggers the wisdom of revising an ordinance that is citywide because of one applicant, that, that's always a balance for me. Do we, do we want to do that? I mean, just in principle, just something to be thinking about, and I wondered if it was primarily, largely probably because of the size of the project. Other thoughts, Ms. Burzak?
So quite some time ago, I commented that in relation to PUD, I feel like the process needs some revamping. And my comment is specifically, I recall them coming before us from the Harbor Shores Inn, because the tent that's out there that they have outdoor events in, in the location it was originally put, they wanted to move it like three feet or something, so they had to go all the way back through. The process, things like that, I would think could be considered minor, but I do start to get nervous about just, I mean, you know, I think that there might be certain vestibules and things like that that could be considered very minor, but when large establishments want to enclose a courtyard, as an example that you mentioned, or anything else like that, that is a significant change, not a minor change, in my opinion.
So what's the prohibition now in the ordinance, follow up on Kathy's point, that keeps you from allowing what she thought would be okay to allow? What is it, the specific in there that stops the city currently from accomplishing those? What, what language are you relying on that we might want to look at?
Check at page 20, under D1, it says changes to building design that, so next you talk of, that do not increase the overall area or height of the structure or number of lung. So this is increasing the overall area of the building with this small.
Well, that's the ability, it says structure, you're reading that to be the same.
So under D1, changes to building design that do not increase the overall area or height of the structure. And by filling in a vestibule or a courtyard, or, you know, making, eliminating a triangular dead space is increasing the area of the building.
Okay.
So the wording in a PUD before was that you guys could approve changes in things like light pole.
Yeah, designs.
They're, they're listed below, so in regards to the tent, we can do, we just keep, because it's not changing the area of the building.
But I thought all they wanted to do was move it, it didn't grow in size, maybe it did grow in size, and that's why you could.
As long as it doesn't, and I, I'm not familiar with the tent issue, but I would say it was a minor, you know, slight redesign or relocation, and that's probably how it's viewed, it's not changing the footprint of the thing, it just shifted it overall.
Right, but I'm saying, I remember them having to come back through, and I thought that seemed a little bit more than what was needed. But you're saying they should have been able to just move the tent without coming back through?
I, I don't know anything about tents, so.
Okay, that was too long ago.
No, it was before me.
Okay.
So I don't know.
I don't remember the time. Considering down by for an entire, never mind, I digress, go ahead, Mr. Eric.
I've got a question, so packet page 23, the aerial, State Street and Chaplain, what, what was, what are you depicting here? What are you?
So this is dwellings, and that was one thing we suggested you would exclude, a residential dwelling development.
So would not include this?
Yeah, it's just showing, you know, how they pop up.
Say again?
So this is a residential dwelling development, and we would suggest that including, excluding that, if you wanted to expand the footprint of the building, because there's already FAR associated with it, or lack of it.
Okay, let me, let, a little history here for some of our newer members, okay?
And this one in particular has other standards.
Well, well, yeah, that, let's, let's remind her, because this is why you may not want to give up eyes. We, we, this body made recommendations on the Chaperan Avenue Development, which were, I would, I will use the term more liberal in terms of allowing the owners to build in square footage, and the then city commission put in restrictions that were imposed at the city commission level that we did not, much more restrictive square footage with owners, and some people would argue that might have contributed to how long it took just to get the houses there that they currently have, and we still have two big allowance there, two, maybe two, I guess. Yeah, the city, including that front lot there, which is supposed to be a park, so there, there was. Okay, I, the concern about that, I, I'm not, I'm not sure what you'd be looking at here. I don't, in other words, I don't know about giving discretion to staff to go around what was an actively voted on city commission requirements. That makes me a little nervous. I'm not saying I disagree, we, we, this body passed a much more liberal development plan for that subdivision, I'll call it a subdivision, than the city commission granted. So I don't know about that, I mean, I, that, that just, something just feels a little off. Because wouldn't that apply, I mean, if we exempt them?
You're saying, you're saying residential's excluded.
From staff's discretion, right, so it would still come to us?
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I have mixed feelings, part of me feels like, you know, that this, you know, commission has a group of people with lots of vast knowledge, and combined, we, you know, we work together to come up with a really good solution, and, and some things, I think, commercial-wise, it's important to have that, you know, that broad experience background that people might have that help them to make those decisions. I get it, if you're, you know, wanting to add a little vestibule on, you know, front of your house, well, a vestibule on front of your house is going to be exempt anyway, based on the way this is worded, a vestibule on a building. I know it's an inconvenience, but it just seems like, you know, the initial, it makes it more important that when you initially do your site plan review, and you come for PUDs and things like that, that you have your ducks in a row, pretty much, and you've got your, what you intend to do, pretty figured out versus coming in then with things that might make it appear less adjusted, because then if you know that, well, I can go ahead and fill this open space in later with a staff approval, and don't go through any kind of, you know, commission approval.
Following up on that, would, how does this work, Kristen? And just to pick up on that theme, is it, boy, it's contraindicated what we're doing in other parts of the ordinance, I understand that going. Something along the, changes to building design do not increase the overall air or height less than or greater than a certain percentage before it kicks in, and then if you change it, so much blank, figure out the engineering formula, how you want to determine that, if, so if it's bigger than just a little triangular piece, at some point, it comes back, I mean, in terms of us trying, the ordinance trying to define what would make it minor versus major, I don't know. We're trying to get away from those kinds of calculations in every other part of the ordinance. So I mean, I hear that as I say it, but I'm just trying to, I mean, I don't know that I just want to advocate all height and area restrictions back to staff and have nothing to say about it, but I get these, that which truly is. and area restrictions back to staff and have nothing to say about it. But I get these, that which truly is minor. Um, I need, but the, again, it's the, the devil's in the details. How do you define it? And where, how do you draw the lines, making that easy for staff? To determine on, and, and to your applicants, this one you, we can do here at the counter, that one you have to go to planning commission. So I, I don't know. This is where I miss Mr. Everett with the engineering mind to give me a percentage of it. Changes more than one percent of the square footage or something, you know, like that.
I felt that it's unfortunate that he couldn't be here for this discussion and wondered if, if it'd be beneficial. Is there something pertinent that would require us to make a decision this month?
Well, it's not a public hearing, so we have to do a, a application for text and then we go through that.
It doesn't have to be decided today.
Valuable input next month or whenever we meet again. And then, because I'm real torn on it. Um, you know, from the developer standpoint, I understand making it easier for them, but then I am concerned that they might not show really the full intent, knowing that they can go internal and get what they want. And then it's not open to that public opinion. And that's the one thing that concerns me.
We are missing out the citizen component, which we're learning is, be kind of important on some issues, but again.
Is it, does this just relate to P U Ds?
Yeah. Yeah. Because a regular site plan is something we can, I can approve internally. If it meets all the zoning requirements, I can staff approve it. And what a P U D, I, you know, unless it falls under those minor things, I can't, I can't.
Okay, thank you. I understand. Thank you.
I, I'm trying to recall, I can't think of any, I can't remember any P U D coming back for something that I would consider trivial. At least, you know, active ones that we actually saw. You know, Harbor Shores, right, is, has been a kind of an evolving project. Right? And rightfully so, right? As, as they saw how customer interests evolved, they evolved how they wanted that project and they came in front of us and that's helped make that be a successful project. You know, I'm thinking something, certainly something along the lines that doesn't, wouldn't increase the number of required parking spaces. Um, when we figure the, you know, I think there's a difference between footprint and floor space is what, what's?
calculated, let's say for the hospital, the beach, under our new rules, that hopefully get approved Monday night. One space for every eight hundred square feet. So, you know, if the addition is five hundred square feet, that would be one space.
Sure. So let's say it was something trivial, like an, an awning or, or, or something that is no, this is just, you know, aesthetic, this is going to create some shade, or it's something that we would probably consider trivial. Would that, if, if it wasn't workable space, would that create another required parking space?
Awning wouldn't, right? Because there are no walls.
Or a vestib.
It's not the footprint. I mean, it's, yes, it's the footprint because it would count towards lot coverage, but the area of the building would not. So I think people, you know, some people need, you know, you needed a vestibule to get, you know, you wanted an enclosed vestibule, that's adding more space.
So that does count, like a vestibule would count towards, okay.
Since we're using this as an example, can you tell me what a vestibule is?
A vestibule would be, like, we have a vestibule here, but it's part of the building. When you come in, there's two sets of doors. That's the vestibule area. Sometimes if a building was designed without one and they want one, they'll add it onto the front of the building. You have to keep air, whole air out or wind out or creates a different entrance into the building.
Yeah, I'm, I'm leery of the percent thing because like, I think like staff mentioned, if the hospital asked for two percent, that could be we, if we saw that going up, we'd be like, who approved that? Or something smaller, uh, it would be tough to digest.
Or maybe a thousand square feet.
Uh, I guess, you know, when I, uh, the, the, to play devil's advocate on that is how many times do they get to keep coming for this thousand square feet?
Vex it out the first time and then you're.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Our, our tracking is better from minor amendments to P U Ds. So if we, we have a document and it keeps being added on. So it's easy to look for one doc, the most recent document and find out what else has happened to the history of the property.
You know, a thousand square feet on a large parcel is one thing versus a thousand square feet on one that still would be a P U D, but really small. So that's true of the percentage works better, but send it to the harm sometimes.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I personally feeling uncomfortable with it, but.
I think if we can track any examples that come up, if, if someone comes to the city, approaches the city, it's like, hey, we kind of would like to do this thing to the hospital or to Harbor Shores. And you look at them and go, hell, you're going to have to put a whole new bunch of paperwork together and come talk in front of the planning. If, I mean, if we could even hear just discussions, whether they just, whether it stops at that point, right? They talk to you and they're like, hmm, that's more than we want to deal with. I think that could maybe help us. Oh, okay. Someone talked to the city about maybe a change and they changed their mind or.
Like, for instance, Edgewater Dunes is a residential area, but it was, so who does a P U D? So the person that came that wanted the.
There's a lot, the, can figure the weird sized.
Yeah, the weird lot that, you know, we didn't approve, because it would be in a lot of people's front yards. Could go through staff then and get something like that approved without going through the public portion of it. And if neighbors were opposed to that, what would they have in terms of say so because, right?
I mean, the one, there were two developments in Harbor, in one, we've already suggested we exclude residential, that's residential. So
But does it, so if it's a P, okay, so you would exclude.
A residential P U D.
Okay, residential P U D only, all.
Cause there were two different requests that came in kind of near each other. One was for a pergola, which increased lot coverage. Well, it exceeds lot coverage, so the staff wouldn't be able to approve.
I gotcha.
The other one was changing the building setbacks. Staff wouldn't be able to do that because it was changing the rules.
Okay.
So for residential, it doesn't really pertain to, because you can, you have established the building setbacks and how do we fill it up as long as you.
So really this Edgewater Dunes one shouldn't even be in here then?
Well, I gave you, I gave you some examples of residential. Okay, something we don't want to talk about. Okay, you know, we can knock it out or exclude it from future discussions. So that's why I have the three examples of residential.
Other thoughts or questions?
I'm just trying to think of something that would be, you know, I understand what the, the city is hoping to maybe achieve. Uh, I wish I could think of good, you know, good examples of typical requests where, hey, something gets approved on paper and in reality hits, it's like, hey, boy, it would be a lot better if this could be over here three feet, or this could be rearranged just a little bit.
That's when the city staff can administratively approve if it's not changing the square footage.
Okay.
You need to shift it over and you still comply with all the setbacks.
Okay.
And, you know, I get the application I review with the city manager. Or a lot of times too, when we say yes or no.
So Silver Beach, what, you know?
So that's a P U D. So if that city wanted to increase the footprint of one of those little buildings, you know.
So using that as an example, then I say they need to come back because Silver Beach, um, and the bluff and the views and the view restrictions.
They still have to comply with the overlay district. Staff would be checking that. So it would be, you know, also what the beach we all know is at zero. So staff wouldn't be able to approve it because it doesn't comply with all the rules.
So then what, what would, so Silver Beach being in here though, what, what could you approve? That would.
Probably depending on where the height elevations change, something there, but you know, I I think as you go north on the beach, it does increase in height, but we'd have to go pull out that chart, that table and look. Another one you could look at is on the storage units on education corner. So originally, those two zones that's at the north, we'll say the north end of the property and then the south end, they're kind of L shaped. Well, originally they weren't completely L shaped and the applicant decided they wanted, didn't want to build out that corner. So staff was able to uh, administratively approve that line card of them. If they wanted to come back to do that today, they would need to come back to the planning division to build that back in.
So even though they originally got approval to have it in, they would still have to come back?
They would, because it's staff approval is now gone because they asked to have it.
I'm, I'm vacillating. Is this really enough of a problem to warrant an action? Now I'm kind of, I'm going back and forth, um, on that, literally. I'm undecided at this moment, but in some ways it sounds like our ordinance is working pretty well. Um, but I'm not, you know, mindful of the small, small things. And if we can figure out just a way to.
Uh, yeah, I could be comfortable in something very small, you know, four hundred square feet or something like that, uh, right? You think of a vestibule or something, something like that. I could, I could consider offering up something very small, like, like four hundred square feet. I can't think of any particular P U D that came back to us. And we've seen right with the hospital and Harbor Shores where I'm sitting here going, why are they here? This is right. Or I feel kind of embarrassed that they're having to come back.
Same thing in my head. I can't. The Harbor Shore changes were huge.
To me was silly, but that was years and years ago. And I think that.
I, I don't remember that either.
I don't remember that. What's the genesis of this? Is this that you have proposed that we?
At the hospital in a, oh, we were talking about something else and they started talking about this other project. And your P U D, you're going to have to lend the P U D to do that. You know, and I mean, I haven't seen the drawings of it, but you know, it's like two room, they end up with two rooms. Hospital rooms, by filling in this triangular piece property and they create one longer straight corridor rather than having to leave one corridor, walk around into the building to get to the other side. You know, it connects something.
Okay, so egress and access is impacted by that change. I don't know. Is that major? Is that minor? What's the square footage? I mean, I, I, I sense that this was driven, kind of driven by a specific, I kind of got that impression. What do we talk about the square footage involved in that hospital proposal? It's not a proposal, hospital thought. What are we talking about? Well, I mean, are we talking thousand, fifteen highway? Any, do you know where, have you, you familiar with where?
We have square footage because of all the P U D and the, the last P U D and all that stuff. You could do something similar to like, the sign ordinance where the parcel is greater than ten acres, you get a little more allowed by staff approval. That would be another way to look at it.
If, if I may, um, how many times in the last three years, five years, do you think if we had, if we were to implement this change that it would have made things easier? Are we talking one time? Are we talking twenty times?
Probably two times and it's more associated with the hospital.
Okay, okay. And how much does that slow a project down to have to come back before?
It's two public hearings and the application fee. It's like a thousand dollars because it's an amendment. Um, so you notify all property owners within three hundred feet twice.
Okay.
You have a public hearing here. And they only took the last.
One here and one at the city.
We probably had maybe five people at the public hearing. Probably none of them came to the city commission's public hearing. Places I've worked, we never required a public hearing before the city commission. You announced when it was and people, if they were interested, they would go to that.
What about if we simplified that part of the process?
That's something you could recommend. I don't.
For this specifically, not for everything. So that it's not so restricted. So that at least the planning committee or whoever can take another look at it and buy some input.
Is time a big concern for, for two events in a five-year period?
It, it can be depending on the timeframe because it's a fifteen day notice. So depending on how the meetings fall, we might get.
Let me phrase it differently. Is, is it time a constraint when they're trying to close in a green space potentially to add a different patient flow that's been available for a decade?
We can't issue any permits until it applies.
Un- understood. I just, yeah, I just, to me, it seems like two times in a five-year window is cost of doing business.
And also if you already know the square footage is, and they've already been thinking about this. If it was that critical, they could have already got it submitted. So that if, if time was of the essence, they could have already got it submitted. So they'd be on the July.
Oh, and let's be, I mean, let's, okay, the, the fees, if this is primarily motivated by a large.
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't worry about the hospital, but they can afford it. Um, and they are, I mean, again, if we're talking about this, they're very well organized. They have an entire departments. Uh, we were just here for the apartment company. I mean, they know what they're doing. They know how to do a project and they know, they know the drill. Um, I, it would be rare, I try to, imposing this kind of, these things on smaller folks. If they occur with PUDs, would be where my focus would be. They know they got to do two meetings. They know how to time their projects. They, and you know, they're, that's a pretty well-oiled machine over there at, at Corwell Lakeland, whatever they are now. I'd be less concerned about that in terms of that causing a problem. I would always just caution, let's stop and think who else we might be impacting by that and would it benefit others? I mean, I don't think the hospital would be unduly, I, I don't think they would be unduly burdened. I, I, I think what that tells me is this ordinance is working pretty well. I mean, I've, I've got the most tenure here again, but I'm still trying to remember just exactly between what you were saying. The last time we had someone in where we're kind of going, wow, we really didn't need you here for this. I can't remember one. That doesn't mean it didn't happen, but I'm just trying to, to think and that tells me we're probably, we're doing okay unless the you know, if this one project you feel strongly about from the city and you can come up with some concrete way to do it without jeopardizing others or unduly burdening other folks. I, I'm not sure what we can offer. That's constructive, at least or enforceable. Cause I'm starting to back away from the percentage. That was not, that was not a good, that was not a great idea. And I don't know about the square footage. Again, any way you do that, you're going to have a bright line. Whether it's three hundred, four hundred, five hundred square feet, some, and someone's always going to be one foot, one square foot bigger. Okay. And, and so I'm not sure that when you do line drawing, there's a level of arbitrariness that's in there and you know, guidance is appreciated on what you think. If it's really just a vestibule, we're all fine with that. Are those typically under five hundred square feet? Are those typically under four hundred square feet? Uh, to Mr. Miller's point, uh, help us out a little bit there. Um, maybe that makes some sense. Can you put a square footage to harm of it, Krista? What do you think? And I'm, I'm getting the expert input. I need input from the experts.
Yeah, I don't, again, because it's different size parcels and buildings, you know, going to this, a percentage is difficult.
Yeah, that's why I'd say, I want to talk about square footage.
Footage. And so maybe like I suggested, you know, kind of like what we did in the sign ordinance where you can ask for a bigger sign. There's no cap on the increase in square footage if you're over ten acres, you know, and maybe. You know, and maybe say if you're over ten acres, which the hospital property is. Out of all the properties that we're talking about. You know, that one could get a thousand square feet or something.
Yeah. Yeah, you could have a percentage, but you have to count that to. Still picking on them.
Yeah.
Where to do, but. There could be some on this.
You know, it is though, just like Jefferson Lofts and a lot of these others. That are P U Ds, they're in residential areas. And I think residents like to know. And have the ability to be able to say. You know, that they have some, you know. Some chance to comment positively, negatively, or they don't comment at all, they don't care. But. You know. Ten, ten acres to get, you know, ten percent of ten acres is still a big addition.
Something that I, I think that happens when we do see. P U Ds come back. Is you kind of get a flavor for how these projects are going along sometimes. And you know, I've, I've said it in a few meetings, you know, sometimes when I'm deciding. On an application. I can look at the applicant and some applicants I can look at and they go, this, this applicant has been a very strong. And positive member of the community and how they've been doing business and how they do work and how they do projects. And right, you kind of get comfortable. It's like, yeah, that this change is going to be positive. They're not going to. It's, it's not going to be some unknown, whereas there's sometimes projects happen and you're like. Ah, I don't think this is going to go as well, or it provides the public an opportunity to go, hey. These things have been going on. This, this P U D isn't. Working well in our community because of how this is laid out and.
Say something to that.
Oh, I, 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 I agree. I have to, I have to. Understand the application and what they're asking for and does it, does it meet our standards? I absolutely agree. I guess I, I should reword it. I can be more comfortable in being supportive. Right? I can, I can support an application, kind of be uncertain if. If it's going to be positive and I can support an application feeling. Yeah, it meets the requirements and I'm very comfortable with.
Well, what's your pleasure? Do you want to direct staff to? Do something, some proposed somethings, do nothing by consensus? We're happy with what we've got or something in between. Draft some language and bring back. Hopefully we'll have. Additional input of.
I, I'm comfortable with what we got. I think, you know, kind of how I understand what we were talking about with. What the hospital was kind of talking about. That example to me, I would want back in front of there, right? It sounds like something that would cost. Well over a hundred thousand dollars to accomplish and. And I, I don't recall being embarrassed by applications coming back. P U Ds coming back.
Other thoughts? Or direction for staff? As I say, it's no public hearing. We can put this on an agenda for another meeting that doesn't have to, we don't have to make final decisions.
Yeah, I'm not poo pooing staff from coming up with suggestions if they, if they can chew on it and go. What about this? And bring it back to us and go, well, hey, think about maybe, maybe something like this. Hey, I don't want to discourage staff from, from creative thinking.
And the other thing I, we always ask them, we, shame on me for not thinking of it. Did you borrow from some of our neighbors and friends? Other ordinances where they have site plan amendment processes and. See if the particularly. Applicable municipalities, how do they address that? And do they have that major minor? And if so, are there other ordinances we can borrow from and see what criteria may have been used that might work? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, I. Do some more research.
Sure.
Kind of came up at the last minute when we were finishing the fact that.
Okay, well, like I said, there's not, like I said, it's not time set, so there's not somebody out there necessarily waiting for a. To turn dirt before December or something and.
Like this project, I think they thought they'd start. In July.
Well, you know, just sometimes just don't always get what you want. Life is hard sometimes.
Happens to me all the time.
And even that wasn't going to happen because that ordinance wasn't going to get changed or clarified by July, so. All right. All right, Kristen. Before we do old business, do you want to bring up what you mentioned briefly to me before the meeting and? And I'm going to get out of the line of fire. Go ahead.
Do you want to do the nomination?
No, let's do the business. Let's stick with business.
So.
Get ready for this.
The motion, the ordinance that you adopted or recommended approval of for parking went to the city commission. On the twentieth or twenty ninth last month. And they recommended, they approved the first reading, however. They believe more could be done and we should be looking at. Parking maximums, which means the developer takes how many parking spaces they believe are appropriate. I said, I said. They probably need a little break.
What?
A little break.
Why?
Parking to talk about.
No, we don't need a break.
So. Moving forward, staff believes it'd be appropriate because we are supposed to be training, doing training annually. And having a consultant come in and the city has budgeted money for that type of training. Come in and do an overview of this new concept about parking with no parking. Having parking minimums. And overview of how it works, best practices, opposing cons, the history of it, how people started looking at it.
But yet they passed it.
They approved the first reading, yes.
Okay.
So does that mean? If this doesn't happen for six months, that's going to sit in limbo and they're not.
No, I think they'll adopt it. They, they agreed that, you know, progress was made, it is an improvement to what we have now. They would like to see more to help developers. Forward in the future. And I know Kalamazoo has that type of, that type of ordinance. I didn't study it. I didn't read it. I just.
What do you mean that, that type of ordinance?
An ordinance that has a parking minimum.
Oh, 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 gotcha.
And there's certain, see, I didn't read the whole thing, there's standards of how you work that. But a lot of communities also do, all site plans go to the planning commission for review and approval. Before anything gets, gets be constructed. So the planning commissioner is really the one who makes those decisions. Their agreement with the number of parking spaces. I have not done a lot of research on it. It's.
If, if I understand, when you say maximum, does that mean if in our current rules, if a project calculates to one hundred spaces? And the ordinance reads. A maximum of fifty is required, that fifty would be the number? Is that what you mean by maximum?
That's the maximum.
So we're getting away from minimums and putting in maximums?
Yeah.
That's a twist.
And the premise is, some people believe that the developer knows how many parking spaces are really needed for a developer.
I, I guess I would, I would look at it as if. Right? This sounds like something that would be important to developers. And maybe developers have a, a better understanding or a different understanding on. If there's developers available that can. Have some time to explain that perspective. And how they think that could be successful. I, I would listen to that, but. To, to shift from what we've already voted on. I, I'm not ready to, to shift from that, but I'll, I'll listen to. Some other knowledge if the. If this training you're talking about, I guess I'd be curious to who the vendor is.
No, we would hire a planning. And then maybe I, I've reached out to Michigan Association of Planners who you've had a lot of training with them in the past. The person then either work for that agency or they're a planning consultant that does site work for that agency. They're, they don't, they're not biased. They just explain it, how they've seen it work. They can, you know, I've asked for examples, the lady who's does the, is responsible for setting up training, she's on vacation.
Uh, Ms. Persick.
So. Working on. You know, site plans where you have to put something together for a potential developer, you have to start somewhere. And so having. The maximum, you know, minimum square footages that you need for parking space or based on. Use, you know, like. Our two, our one, two spaces per dwelling unit and everything. It's very important and helpful and beneficial. And I guess you can always ask for that not variance waiver. If it's a P U D, if you want to go lower. So I don't really see. This being. That different because we already looked at it from a standpoint of decreasing requirements. And if a developer says, well, I can prove that I have a five hundred square foot outdoor patio. And everyone using it walks up and we don't need to provide an extra space for. Those tables out there, then so be it. So I guess I'm not following why all of a sudden we're going to, you know, completely.
Throw out everything we already did.
Yeah, I didn't want to be so hurt.
I don't think it's like quite that, but, but again, I guess.
Abandoned.
Here's where we go back and, you know, I go back and we'll start. Start it over again. I, I, you know, I never have any problem with people that want to come and tell us about things. What I, what I do, it's not really a problem. But a reminder to those of you who. Attend both bodies meetings. If they want something along those lines, please tell us. Earlier. Okay, if that's what they were, we may or may not agree. We might disagree and, but at least. Send us the charge of what you're looking for. In this case, they want us to examine. Doing maximums or minimums or however they want. Okay, fine. Front end of the process would have been nice and then we could have had that conversation and either thumbs up or thumbs down. That's it. And I remind all of my fellow planning commissioners, the city commission can vote no. They can change the ordinance if they choose to do so. Reminding you of Chapin, which is what they, they, they have that authority and they know that. But now nuts and bolts, do I have any objection to somebody coming to talk to us about parking? Gosh, because there's no one to talk about parking these days. So, okay. I'm fine with that. I just don't know. I mean. We are not required to change anything. We can if you choose to. If they come in and convince you, we need to do it a different and better way. And the city commission always has the authority to change it if they do not agree with us. So we don't find them. I mean, council, that, that's, that part's all correct, correct?
It is, I think, the only. Only conversation here. They, they don't have to accept the planning commission's recommendation. I was concerned in this case when that came up at the meeting that we really. Had looked at with no parking minimums as that wasn't studied and there was a brief discussion, but that really was a long time ago. And if there was. Standing on that option. So I didn't feel that was appropriate to do that, but that wasn't something that planning commission studied. They needed to send it back if they wanted to have that.
Okay. Do you understand that to be the, the genesis of this request? To come back and look at that one issue or is it stronger than that?
That's my understanding. But we were passed up that having from. Can I, I'm not, not a planner, so, but that's what.
Okay.
A couple of commissioners that have gone to some.
Oh, there you go.
So I was just trying to get more information on that. Would be official.
Okay.
All right, can I ask a hypothetical? So the old Y building property, for instance, right? If that gets developed, current state, it's going to need X number based on two bedrooms, three bedrooms, et cetera.
One per unit.
Right, so. Is it possible in this new scenario that the developer could say, well, my map tells me I only need. X number, even though I have Y number of units? Is that where we're? Potentially interesting.
There's, and like I said, I didn't fully read in depth of one in. Kalamazoo, but it also got into like, to road you were on. You know, it, it addressed some other things and I, I didn't really study it. I just was looking in general to see if I could find any. In the general area that do have, some people have gotten new zoning ordinances in the last year or two and. South Haven got a new one recently and they stayed with the traditional way of.
Well, Kalamazoo is close enough. That inquiry could be made. Somebody could come see us. I'd be interested in knowing what. The varying point of view in Kalamazoo. It's a nice drive down here in the summertime, so that's not. Too burdensome. That would be interesting. I think before we make a commitment either way, we do need to get more information. I mean. You're, you're freely admit, you, you've got ordinances you want to look at. Before I sign off on that's the best idea we've ever had, or we're going to change all the hard work we did. But I'm open to hear. Let's, let's hear the pitch and let's. See what we think and have a conversation and see how some of these other communities. I'd love to hear from somebody from the Kalamazoo County Planning Commission or was it the city or the county?
Yeah, but.
I'd love to hear from somebody from Kalamazoo and come on down and talk to us about their debate and what went into their ordinance. Yes, Ms. Persick.
So walkability is way different in a community like Kalamazoo than it is in a community like St. Joseph, Michigan. As an example. You have to have a car or a means of transportation unless you're going to buy all of your groceries at the little shop at the corner. Behind a zoo. So it's not a fair comparison. So I'm totally in favor of having someone come talk to us, but it needs to put the criteria of what. The requirements are in an area like this.
Oh, yeah, and the birdie mall. I mean, Kalamazoo is a mall, is a mall city too.
They're not the right fit for what we need in versus, because we need to know that. If we propose something like that and it also. You know, the amount of time you all spent counting up every parking space in all these. Apartment buildings and everything else. And we came up with a count that meant that. If you came home at night, you could park your car after you worked all day. Because guess what? We didn't say. You don't need a minimum number because we didn't make it. An excessive number. We made it based on the minimum number based on the needs that are there. And so that's the frustrating part to me. It's not like we just pulled it out of the air. There was lots of time and effort and research on staff's part. To do all that research. And it wasn't just some nelly bully thing that we just came up with.
Well, the flip of that is I remember Mr. Brit, I'll quote him even though he's not here, you know, good developer, they're going to. Every, it's like signage, every square inch they can get for signage, they're going to, they're going to maximize. That's the doing business. If they can get another unit, they're going to get another unit. That's not a bad thing. That's just. A good business person trying to maximize their investment. And that may always, that may not always. Serve the greater good of, or the neighborhood. I mean, there, there might be a balance. I, I'm, but I'm open to that, I'm open to that conversation.
Krista. With respect to the downtown area, the new parking. Ordinances. It sounds like it would be valuable to coordinate all of this together. So that they work. Because if you give a developer that goes in there and says, I only need one parking space. But really, you know, you, in time, you realize that he needed three, but if there's, you know, he only has one. Then that falls on. Using the other spaces that exist downtown, but we need an overall strategy for this. And now I see that we've changed the strategy just in the last couple of hours or that they've come up with another way. We need. You know, instead of keep putting Band-Aids on this stuff, we, some, we need to really look at it, I think. And pull back and say, how are we going to do this? We do need development downtown. We have parcels that are sitting there that should be developed. And they're not getting developed. So. And part of it is because the cost of doing it and it has to do with the cost of putting in underground parking. It's, it's cost prohibitive. So that's where I think the counts, where we all should be looking. And that would be valuable time for us to look at. But putting, you know, just changing this and say, okay, we're going to have no, we're going to have a max.
This would feel with the entire city downtown.
I get it.
I've worked in places where you couldn't provide, you didn't want to provide all your parking inside, you could pay a fee. You were supposed to have five parking spaces, you could pay. You were supposed to have five parking spaces. You could pay at that time fifteen thousand dollars a space. And it went into a, an account to pay for parking in the future or where the city was going to provide for parking in downtown.
For like a parking structure.
Yeah, if that's what they wanted to do.
It might be that.
Or they, there were a lot came up and the city decided to buy that. That's where we're at with that. I do expect the ordinance to be approved Monday next.
Well, I think the clearest direction to us for future discussion or presentation on what the city specifically questioned and wanted us to consider. The more specificity and direction we can have, I think it helps tailor our meetings and we stay focused. And, and then there's accountability of this is what they asked, this is what we'll do. I think that is always very helpful. So I guess if it's subject to whatever other arrangements these other folks may have, um, I mean, we're certainly open to having it on the agenda and taking a look at things. Sure. Much to learn.
Is it possible though, to get someone that would base it more on a community like ours versus because I don't feel that, you know, Kalamazoo is a good fit and it needs to be more something closer.
I believe we're not going through math, Michigan Association of Planning. Over they'll get to do it, they'll do it. You know, we can talk about that, you know? Having, having smaller towns do it or tourist towns do it, something better.
Tasky or.
Talk about other larger populations, but I, I
Lakefront communities.
Sure. A heavily populated area, but you know, a lot of people use public transportation or have walkability is way different than an area like we have. And so it's, it's really not beneficial if it's not comparing apples to apples.
All right. That give you what you need to start making calls or making arrangements, Kristin?
Yeah, I have a I'm working on it.
Okay. What else, if anything, is on the July agenda, which is a different date? Everybody remember?
Here's the deadline. We might have a public hearing for a special use permit for short-term rental in the R three district. They have to go to ZVA for a variance first. And we possibly most likely, and I, I don't think, I'll be ready, but parcel two, part of parcel two. Here, not the piece of property where they're doing a zoning process.
We are scheduled for July, is it ninth? Reminder, everybody, it's the off week. The other, the other weird meeting, it's a Wednesday, I believe.
It is.
Let's see, yeah. All right. Then, uh, Mr. Teffs, to you, sir, nominating committee.
All right. Ms. Porter, Ms. Burzak and I convened and would like to ask Ms. Hartzell if she would continue as chair. And Mr. Ebert, who is not here, if he would be the vice chair again.
Hey, um, then the form of a motion?
Yes, but I need somebody to do the needful for me in a second, I think. I'd like to make a motion for that. A second then.
A motion in a second?
Yeah.
Discussion on the motion.
Do we need to have Mr. Ebert here to accept?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
I did communicate with him and he did tell me he was willing to. I did check that.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, can we do a vote, can we do voice vote or have to be individual? Is there any other discussion on the motion? Quick, I call the law.
Mr. Flotka?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Teffs?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Chair Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. Ora?
Yes.
Ms. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Burzak?
Yes.
Mr. Teffs, Ms. Porter, Ms. Burzak, thank you for doing that. The last thing busy people need are other meetings. So we encourage phone and Zoom and anything that makes it, so your willingness to, to do that on top of your other schedule is greatly appreciated. So thanks. All right, um, public comments. We have, we have a public.
Yay.
This is our new, Bill, this is Clint, he's our new, um, building inspector.
Oh. Welcome. From where do you, where do you hail, sir? What's your background? Tell us a little about yourself.
Yeah, um, I live on Port Street. Mr. Robert Warren here. I've lived there for a long time. And I'm on my own construction renovation, um, real estate management and assessing. Long time now, I don't know, for ten, fifteen years. Um, so lots of experience here in the city of St. Joe. Um, most current projects I completed was nine seven big, I've been around the city for a long time. Lot of planes, lot of police presence there. Um, and I've, I've been back there once since I've been down there, so. It's probably one of the bigger projects I've completed and, uh, just had to figure and rest of the team in the building department and.
Are you originally from the area?
I am, yep.
Thanks.
I've left a couple of times to go to the school. Um, I have my bachelor's degree in my, my master's. Other than that, I've been here in St. Joe.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you in the future.
Me too. Nice to meet all of you.
Any other public comment? Hearing anything else from commissioners for staff or just in general? Because staff hasn't had anything to do this week, so I'm sure you've got to come up with a list of, a list of stuff.
Everyone for all they do.
Staff's had a rough, staff city hall's had a rough week, so. If that, then do, do we have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Burzak, thank you. Do I support for her motion? Ms. Rice supports her motion. Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. We're adjourned. See you on the ninth of July. Thank you all.
It's ninth at four thirty, right?
Same time, but different day.
Are you back? Yes.
You're back by the way.
When you're leaving, you're leaving what? Leave next one. When we can, when we'll be back the twenty third.